I would like to call the Flint Board of Education Committee of the whole meeting to order at 6:30. Yeah? Present? If, just please respond, present for the public record. Danielle Green?
Present.
Casey Lester? Casey Lester, has anybody heard Casey about baby yet? Yeah, anything? Okay.
Haven't heard anything. Haven't heard anything?
Yes. Yes, present.
Perry?
Present.
Myself, present. Blake Stroger? Diana Wright? Right, at this time, the board will hear any comments from the public. Public members that have joined our meeting remotely are able to submit their questions through the question section or may send an email prior to the meeting. Members of the public are reminded that the Board of Education by its bylaws 1370 are not obligated to answer questions, make statements, or comment issues raised by the public in general. Such issues, such issues will be referred to the superintendent for investigation, study, or recommendation. At this time, I'll ask Stephen if there are any comments from the public. Stephen?
Good evening, there are currently no questions.
The committee is reminded that they may submit their questions by email. The community is reminded that they may submit their questions by email to fboe@flintschools.org to have their questions read at the next meeting. Thank you. New business? Action item? It's 1.1, Ms. Perry. Human reso-
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, please. I interrupted.
I'd like to call the Human Resources Committee of the whole order. I would like Mrs. Washington to present the information to the board.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I seek a motion and a second to move action item 1.1 Personnel Recommendations to the regular board meeting on July 15, 2020 for adoption.
So moved. Ms. Perry?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Um, I have a question. Is there a way we can pull that up? Because I'm looking at two screens right now, just to do my part. I need to see the personnel recommendations. I guess I should have pulled up. Wait a minute, where's my phone?
I can pull that up right now, Ms. Perry. Just give me one second.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that. Because I normally would have a paper copy and I didn't tell Mo to give me one. I thought I had it under control until we started getting ready to vote. I'm sorry, y'all. I'm holding everybody up, but-
No, please don't worry about it, Vera, because I'd be in the same position if I didn't have a paper copy in front of me. Nothing to worry about.
So, Ms. Perry, part of the problem is, is that Board Book, if you recall, Board Book is going through a, an upgrade. And so it's temporarily disabled. So I had to yell it to all of you.
You're right.
In the, and Stephen doesn't have the capability of pulling it up in this particular-
My apologies.
Yeah, and he apologizes. Of course, I'm interrupting him.
I can share the screen and share my screen if you have it.
Oh, awesome. Stephen, can you share the Carrie's screen?
Yep, we'll do it right now.
I appreciate that. And I know you had told us that before, and this is my fault. When you contacted me and asked me if I wanted a higher copy, I told you, no, I was good. Well, I lied.
No, you misspoke. You didn't lie. Just misspoke.
Okay, we'll give it a nice word.
So it is two pages, if you can see it, and uh-
Can you enlarge it a little bit?
Let me see. Should be, yep, there we go.
Ms. Perry, if you spread things out, it might get larger for you. Mine got larger.
Just let me know when you need me to scroll down.
Okay, scroll down. I mean, I'm, I'm just- I didn't have any questions. I just wanted to make sure I remember looking at it. And I'm not counting. How many retirements is this so far, Mrs. Washington?
Thirteen.
Thirteen retirements?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you for showing that, you all. Okay, any other questions? All righty, as I call your name, oh, did we have a-
We had a second. We had a motion.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, Mo, did you get that? I'm sorry, I didn't write it down.
Yes, it was Danielle Green made the motion and Carol seconded.
Okay, okay. So if there's no other comments, as I call your name, please say yes or no to approve the motion. Treasurer Green?
Yes.
Trustee McIntosh?
Yes.
Secretary Ramsdale?
Yes.
And myself, Vera Perry, yes. The motion passes 4-0. Am I, did I say that right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Seeing no further action, I declare the Human Resources Committee of the whole meeting adjourned. I now turn the floor over to Treasurer Green for the Finance and Operations Committee of the whole portion of the agenda. Thank you, Mrs. Washington.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. I would like to call the Finance Committee of the whole meeting. Um, and I'd like to turn it over to Carrie Sikowski.
Good evening, everyone. I seek your approval to move action item 11.1 Fiscal Year 21 Schools Open to the regular board meeting on July 15, 2020 for adoption.
So moved.
Second?
It has been properly seconded that we move action item 11.1 um, schools open to the full board on July 15, 2020 for adoption. Is there any discussion?
I, I just have one thing I'd like to say. Um, when I look at all of these and the length of time it takes us, I'd like to think about, and this is one of the things we discussed when we were going through the Neola things or our things or whatever. But, and I'd like just to think about this, that maybe when we have from any of the, but it's usually finance, such a length, that we ask at some point if there's any discuss- on, on any of the action items. And then to have the questions and that done on that action items. And I, and Ms. Perry, you usually have, you're very diligent about that. So you would have, say, a question on 11.12 and we would discuss that. And if we took those questions before, then we could vote in a batch. Is that making sense? If we answered all the questions before we voted? And then we could take the rest of them in a batch and that might save us a great deal of time like in our regular ones. So that's just something to think about. Um, and not, I'm not trying to make a motion or anything else like that, but I was thinking about it today. Yes, go ahead, Vera.
Ms. Perry?
Sorry, it's Ms. Green.
I sit on the Finance Committee, so when we have our committee meeting, I ask a ton of questions. And so I have no questions. I have my answers right in front of me. Um, it's, it's sad when people who are not in that committee may have questions. But I don't have any questions. All my stuff is written right here in my notebook.
Yeah. And that's what I'm saying. But I, what I'm, what I'm saying though is, excuse me Danielle for interrupting, but what I'm saying is that we all look at that really carefully. And then we ask the questions, you know, to start off with, are there any questions? And I might have a questions or ask for an explanation on 11.11. And then if not, we could vote as a batch. But even then, when we go to vote as a batch, you can still say, are there any questions on this? And someone could still put one up. But it would, to me, it would just save us time uh, and, and take that and make the meetings, you know, would just save everybody time, is what I'm thinking. So just-
100%. Does anybody not agree with that? Ms. McIntosh?
I have, I haven't, no. Whatever the pleasure of the board is.
I just want to make sure, because I agree, but I, I'm coming from a point with Ms. Perry where we were already able to ask our questions in the subcommittee meeting. And I just want to make sure.
Well, I'm sure that even if we agree on that, if people have questions when it's time to-
That's right.
Way, so, you know, and then sometimes it takes somebody else to ask a question to trigger something in your mind. But like I said, whatever the pleasure of the board is, then I have no problem with complying with that.
Okay, we can think about, because again, there would always be the opportunity to ask questions.
Right.
That we'd never negate that. But then if we could say like, just today, okay, we've answered all these questions. You don't have any, can we vote on this in a batch? And it would just make things move a lot, a little better. So uh, maybe people can think about it a little bit and we can discuss it or come to a conclusion, especially those of you that are on the Finance Board, because it affects you the most. Well, no, it affects all of us. So yeah, maybe let's put it in some thought someplace, okay?
So I was looking at, well, you're thinking about it.
That's fine with me, because I've looked at all of these too, and I do not have any questions.
Okay, so, Ms. Sikowski, is that something that, is this, we're not violating any policies, any laws or rules by doing that?
No, nope, absolutely not. Um, did you want to see if there's questions before I make the motion? Okay.
Um, Mrs. Ramsdale, do you have any questions in relation to any of these action items?
Um, no, I, I don't. I, I've gone through all of them. I've looked. And uh, yeah, no, no questions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ramsdale. Ms. Perry, I know you said you don't have any questions. I just want to make sure you haven't thought of anything. Okay, thank you, Ms. Perry.
No ma'am.
Um, Ms. McIntosh, you have any questions about any of the action items, 11.1 through 11.24?
I do, on 11.12, Authorization to Replace the Pool Heater. Okay, that's a, nope, I don't. I don't, I remember that. Okay, no, no, no. I'm fine. Thank you.
Welcome. Um, Ms. Sikowski?
Okay. I seek your approval to move action items 11.1 through 11.24 in batch to the regular board meeting on July 15, 2020 for adoption.
So moved.
Second? It's been properly seconded that we move action item 11.1 through 11.24 to the regular board meeting on July 15, 2020 for adoption. Um, seeing no further discussion, the motion is, seeing no further discussion, the motion is move, again, I'm sorry, 11.1 through 11.24 to the regular board meeting. I will be, I will conduct the roll call. As I call your name, please say yes for approval or no. Please say yes or no to approve. Vice President Wright, who was not present?
Yeah, yes.
Your McIntosh?
Yes.
Trustee Perry?
Yes.
Trustee Stroger was not present, and myself, Treasurer Green, is yes. Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So before I adjourn, I got a couple of, I guess, questions or concerns for whoever, Mrs. Stewart, Ms. Sikowski, or Cassandra. Um, I really would like for us to get this McCree thing behind us or move forward with it, however that's going to work. Um, because I got an email and it was stating that the board did not want McCree in Northwestern. And I don't know if we missed the vote on that or are we not voting on that? I'm not sure how that's supposed to go. But I would like some clarification on that. You can provide it for me later or you can provide it for me now.
You know? Uh, Danielle, Ms. Green?
I was trying to give Mrs. Stewart an opportunity to chime in.
Okay. Well, well, we're waiting for her. I have to say, I don't know that I know the whole story. So I guess I'm very informed, you know, to, you know. So I, I would like, you know, I'd like it all, it out in front of me, you know, if I'm going to be involved in it. I just wanted to mention that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ramsdale. And Ms. McIntosh?
I thought we did vote on it when it all- I'm not-
Sorry.
I could be wrong, but I thought we did vote on it, vote on it when we couldn't get any documentation and all of that. I thought the board took the position when Mr. Lopez was here, that McCree would vacate. Now, since then, if, if it's been some reconsideration or whatever. I got an email from him too, but it's shocking now. Well, I'll leave that alone and I'll let Mrs. Stewart answer and then I'll come back with that. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Ms. McIntosh. Ms. Perry?
Yeah, um, um, Lopez had said that, in one of our board meetings, he made a statement that he would, that it's up to the board to evict them out or something like that. Um, because we, he never would, he never presented any information. We kept asking, Carol kept asking for information. I kept asking for information. We never had a contract. We never knew if they ever paid any money. We knew that they had re, had subleased it out to somebody. Where did that money go? All this came to the board and we didn't know what to do. We didn't, we hadn't heard anything. And so he said at the end, and I don't have that particular notebook in front of me, I don't know if I wrote it down, but he said that uh-
He hadn't collected enough money.
Say it again.
He said that they had quit paying, paying their rent. He hadn't collected any money. And that whatever little verbal agreement that they had made, that the McCree was in breach of that agreement, which is how we ended up voting to oust him at that, at that need. I remember-
That's true.
Now, like I said, if, if this, if it's the board's pleasure to reconsider, those were the terms of the fallout when we ended up voting when Mr. Lopez was here.
But the lease was never correct.
Right, it never was-
They only had a one event lease. And Lopez never gave a long-term lease and he never brought it to the board for the board to vote. This was all, we don't know if they ever paid any money. Nobody ever gave us a report on money.
But let me ask a question here to go follow your question, Perry. If they gave us money, there should be a record of it. It would be money that was brought in. If there's, to me, to me, if they did not pay anything in the time they were there, we have no record of their paying us, then that's a done deal to me. If they were there for, that was a year, they were there for a year and they did not pay us all. And it could be, Perry, do, do you have any record of them making a payment?
If, may I?
Ms. Sikowski?
Yes, yes, they, they have, they have made payments to the district.
How much?
Uh, I'd have to investigate that. I don't know that off the top of my head.
So, okay, good, 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 good evening, board members. So uh, a couple months ago, um, there was discussion about the McCree Theater um, and where they stood as far as their lease agreement, where they stood as far as payments um, to, to the district. Um, and at that point in time, there was a request for um, uh, for, for myself and Rachel to collect all of the information that we had on the McCree Theater and to submit that information to um, to the Williams Farm. That information was submitted to the Williams Farm. Um, I, I don't know if it would be of benefit for me to go through all of that information with the board members. Um, at this point in time, they have made payments. Um, they made payments from August through April. They made payments. There are some other issues um, that I don't think that we want to talk about at this point in time. Um, if board members would like for me to uh, send you some information, I would be more than happy to send you some information, but there was um, as you requested uh, for me to do, to collect, to gather some information on the McCree Theater and submit it to the Williams Farm. I did do that. Um, I, their, their um, agreement, uh, nothing that uh, has any signature on it. Uh, technically, technically expires, hold on, I'm pulling that back up again. Technically expires um, August 2nd. But once again, there are no signatures on the agreement. Uh, but it technically expires um, August 2nd. And so due to the agreement, um, not having any signatures on it and some other things that I wish, that I could share with you at another point in time, um, information was provided to McCree that we would not be renewing or entertaining anything at this point in time. And to give them adequate notice of that, that was provided to McCree so that they could have at least 30-day notice of that information.
So, was, am I missing, I'm thinking I don't remember us voting on it, and Carol could be right, but I just maybe have forgotten. Is that something that the board voted on or that's something that was just decided?
I think we did vote on it, because I remember, because, because Lopez said openly at a meeting that McCree had made payments and just quit making payments and quit answering the phone for him. And I'm going to say this.
But my question, Mrs. Stewart, is that something that we, you know, have a record of us voting on that? Is that something that we, that was all just decided? I just can't remember. I might not even been there. I'm just asking.
So I can just tell you what I know of from the point of me taking over. I, I don't know if there was any thing that had happened prior to that. And I know a lot of the conversations with the board were with Dr. Lopez about the McCree Theater prior to, um, prior to me coming on and sitting in this seat.
Okay, okay. So I, so I, I guess I ask that because I just want, because I don't remember a vote. Um, like I said, I could be mistaken, but I don't, the board collectively decided that, if that's something Lopez did. That whole thing was hand, was so mishandled that I don't know exactly what happened. You know, it happened in so many different ways, and I don't think it was McCree's fault. I think it was, you know, whatever Lopez failed to do when I took the opportunity to. I didn't know he was going to mishandle like that, but I think that, that was failure on our end because superintendent was Lopez at the time. So I was just wondering, you know, he's like- board voted, I was like, I can't stand this man. Voted on for certain? Or do other board members remember us voting on it? I just don't.
I don't really remember.
Neither.
But can I, can I say, Cheryl had her hand up, then I wanted to say something.
Betty, do you remember voting on it?
Remember a lot of discussion about it. I can't remember if we did or didn't, but the discussion-
Right. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And then the other thing that I just want to put on the table for, for, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. McIntosh had her hand up. Ms. Green, you want to, you want to get Ms. McIntosh?
I said her name three times. Can y'all hear me?
I didn't hear you.
You were going in and out.
Okay, Ms. McIntosh?
Well, this is, I thought we had voted on it. I could be wrong. Um, but I thought we had voted on, we might be wrong. But what is amazing to me is, was this whole time we have been asking about a lease or some proof of insurance. Mr. Winfrey never got in touch with anybody on this board that I heard of to say, I'm going to show you my information or nothing. Like I said, he made a lot of money up there because he had a lot of shows for us to not really, if we never found out what that, what the numbers was on that, when none of the information was disclosed. Now, all of a sudden, he's getting in touch with all the board members to let us know. Miss Nieda told him he got to go and, well, he sit on a board of a school. He know how it goes. He knows it was supposed to come before the board. So with that being said, and I understand all this, but um, mm-mm. Because it's just been shady off going. Like I said, now all of a sudden, he knows protocol. Okay. I'm done with it.
When um, I've called Lopez several times about going, about the insurance and the background checks that were done. And I'm not sure why it didn't come to the board, why we didn't get it. But from my understanding, that's something they have been trying to give to Lopez. So it, I don't know about the shady part, but it was definitely mishandled. If you know how I feel. So I just wanted to know that, you know, all the board collectively agrees to whatever move we plan to make as a district. And I don't remember voting on it, so I would like us to do that.
Well, I'm not knocking that. I'm not stopping you from wanting it.
To Anita, because she, if she can dig it up, maybe she could find it. Or, because we make, like I said, I may be wrong, we may not vote. Me, Ms. Ramsdale, I may be wrong. I don't know. But I would just like to do it the right way.
Well, in reference to the shady part, because I said it was done shady. It never came before the board in the first place for him to get in there. That's what I meant when I said it was done shady.
But I said mishandled. That's what I'm talking about. It never became, but I didn't know it was, you know, it was beyond me that that's how it was going to be done. That was something that was, you know, that Lopez did. So I'm not sure what should have been done differently, but it was mishandled.
It came, legal looked at it and legal told us that he didn't have a lease. He didn't have a right.
When, before they even moved in the building, is what I'm talking about, exactly what you said. It never came up for us until there was a problem or an issue. So we, I think as a board, we should have been able to vote on it from day one. That didn't happen. And it wasn't because McCree, that was because of Lopez. So I'm just wondering, from this, from here, where do we go from here, Mrs. Stewart?
So, um, Ms. Green, I will research to see whether or not there were, there was ever any board action on it. If there was not any board action on it, then I will, I will bring it before the board.
I just think that's fair. Okay, I appreciate that. Is any more comments, questions, concern in McCree?
You?
Yeah.
No.
So, so-
I had my hand up.
Perry, your screen is closed, Ms. Perry. We can't see you.
Had her hand up at one point.
Her screen is froze. We can't see her.
I can't see me?
No. Foes, but that's it. Ms. Perry?
Oh, I'm froze?
Yes, ma'am.
And on my end, I'm not froze?
Yeah, you froze.
On my end? Um, yeah, this was not done correctly, and, and I totally agree that I think it's a shared uh, mess-up. Because uh, as Ms. McIntosh said, Mr. Winfrey sits on the board himself and he knows what's supposed to happen. And he knows that he did not have a signed agreement. And at that point, he could have come to the board meeting and sat at that table and said, board, we got a problem because I don't have a signed agreement with you all. He chose not to do that, so that makes it look shaky to me. That looks real shady. Um, so yeah, I would like to see information brought to us. I can't tell you how many times, and I can only speak for me and Carol, how many times Carol and I asked, is there any money being paid? And no one said that. So I find it interesting tonight, yes, there was money paid. Why wasn't that said at a board meeting? That was said a whole bunch of times. That was asked. Because Carol and I were asking that question. And so I'd like to see when, how much, uh, how much, did you get any cut of the money when it was subleased to whoever, that I think was a church, when it was subleased out? How you gonna sublease a lease that you aren't even, that, that you don't even have a legal lease? So it's a lot here. And, and let's say this, we getting ready to close Northwestern, so-
So we gonna- That was my thought too, Ms. Perry. We talking about closing Northwestern because we can't afford to keep it open. But then, like I said, also another issue I had with it, he didn't, you know, we was footing his bill because he had all them concerts. We carried that electric bill. And like I said, we haven't contacted Mr. Winfrey now. He sent me a- He sent me an email talking about Ms. Stewart told him he had to vacate the premises. I didn't contact him, just like I didn't contact him to get in Northwestern. He knew how to get in touch with me when Ms. Nita told him he had to go though. He wanted to write all these corresponding uh corresponding letters and he wanna go back and forth. But you know, if this board votes on it, I understand because that's the democratic process. But I'm gonna let y'all know now, it's gonna be a nay for me because Mr. Winfrey been knew. He was in violation and now I Ms. Ms. Stewart is the superintendent. We voted for her. If she asked him to leave, she knows our financial situation better than him. He got a millage with uh with uh down with uh. We're bursting. He got plenty of money to pay his bills or to find him a place. We've already footed Mr. Winfrey. And if we let Mr. Winfrey up in there, my request to this board is to get all the financials from Mr. Winfrey about how many events he had, because I asked for that. Okay, in an open meeting and I know Mr. Winfrey heard it. I've asked, how many events did he have? How many tickets did he sell? Nobody could ever tell us anything. Now, all of a sudden, he can correspond and he can disclose that he paid money to this person and he did this. He could have did that a year ago when he moved in there. See, so that's.
I'm gonna say this. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, girl. I'm sorry.
My thing is moving forward with me, I'm just gonna just to let my fellow board members know. I love y'all and I support y'all when we for the right thing. That includes Ms. Stewart. But when you try to play me, I want you to understand this, everybody who out there watching. When you try to play Ms. McIntosh, because if you're doing it right, you don't have to run game. You can say exactly what it is and we all understand business, okay? And we understand sometimes you have to make concessions and exceptions. But when you try to lay something slick down, nay. That cuts out a lot of mess, nay. Because it was high liability dealing with Mr. Winfrey. And then on top of us carrying a high liability, we never seen proof of insurance. Before we go in there, I wanna know how much he made. I want proof of insurance, period. But I'm voting no. But if y'all vote him in there, I got I need to see all of that. Or I got a major problem with it because it's just a matter of time before that blow up in our face. That just wasn't a good deal and I think that we just lucked up to be able to get him a body. Now, the next time, we might not be so lucky.
And and can I say this, Danielle? Danielle? Can I say this? Danielle?
Ma'am, Ms. Perry.
Um. We had an emotional uh uh vote the other night, voting to close Northwestern. If we can't keep Northwestern open for our babies, I'm not keeping Northwestern open for a grown up.
Okay.
So that's where I am with that. I I I would not support that at all.
This is what I'm saying. We're not closing though, for us, we're just moving the students, right? Because that's that's a little different in my, you know, in my opinion. That's not closing it because we have central kitchen and we're moving the stu.
But what I mean by closing, it will not be used for any education. It's just central kitchen. So it's closed.
So, okay, and I guess I guess, yeah, I see what you're saying, but in my mind, you know, in my mind, because people ask me that. Are we closing? And I said, no, central kitchen will still be there. We're just moving the students. That was that's just the message that I've been giving out in the community. I just didn't look at it like being closed since it's still gonna be open for something. Okay, okay. Is any any more comments, questions about the McCree issue?
So, Ms. Green, is this still your your request for me to uh do my research to see if the board voted on it? If the board did not vote on it, you still want this as an action to come before the board for the board to officially vote?
I would like that to happen. I just think that's just how it should be done properly. Just so it would fit, whatever we decide, it'll be the board's collective decision.
And it will be, there will be a record of it. That's important.
All right.
And let's check if it ever was a record of it. It would be one of Lopez's last meetings.
Yeah. And that's where you think the um the vote took place, Ms. McIntosh? Is that where you think the vote took place?
One of our last meetings, it seems like we did vote on that because he said he wanted to put them out because he had been calling Mr. Winfrey. Mr. Winfrey would not return any of his calls and he had not received any monies from Mr. Winfrey. That is what he said and that is what I remember and that is what I think. I'm pretty sure that we brought it before and he wanted to and he got our permission right then because he wanted to serve the notice. So he had to.
Okay.
Far as I remember, now, I could be wrong, but we vote on a lot of stuff, but that's how I remember.
Okay, okay, thank you. And the next thing I have, the the hearing coming up July fourteenth to seventeenth. Um, I just wonder, I don't know, I don't even know if you can answer this right now, um, Ms. Stewart. But I'm I'm wondering about um as board members, because I was thinking maybe, I don't know if any of us will get subpoenaed or any of that. But is is that still on the hearings, the fourteenth to the seventeenth of July? The AC or the.
Yes, ma'am. It is Monday through uh Monday through Thursday.
So um is it, I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry. So is it something that anything we need to do as board members or we just? Um, because I was wondering about subpoenas or anything. Is there anything like that coming down or do you know of anything about that?
No, ma'am. Nothing for the board members.
Okay, okay, thank you. And um a seat at the table for that settlement we voted to approve. Because I, like I said, the benefits for the Flint Community Schools are gonna be in the details. So I just, you know, a couple of weeks ago about board members being able to be present at the table, something. Did you get any feedback on that?
Not yet.
Okay, and this is the last thing. Research on the interviewing process for administrators for um schools. And I've seen a lot of panels included board members. Is that something we ever did or ever considered doing?
Um, I will, can I defer that to Cassandra Washington? Cassandra?
Hi, yes. Um, I don't know if that's something that we have ever done in um Flint Community Schools, but we are open to that because we are looking for a diverse panel of different voices, uh, a different backgrounds and experience to help bring a more uh objective perspective to the interview process. So if that is something that the board members are interested in, we can definitely consider that moving forward as we continue to interview candidates.
Oh, thank you, Suzanne.
What was your question?
I asked about um us being included on the panel for interviews for administrators as board members. Is that something that we ever did? Is that something that we can do or would consider doing?
I don't think we can do that. We can't be part of the hiring process. That's not our job. That is not our duty.
The research.
Let me, let me just say the what the I know of a couple of times when uh people have interviewed, like for example, um when we hired to what uh Larry Watkins had this. And on the interviews, and I remember one time when I was interviewed, I was interviewed by Ms. Ennis. When I first came on through Montadog High School, Ms. Ennis and a panel, none of them were board members, but there was a panel of six or eight people. But I think Ms. Perry is right. I think our getting into the hiring process would create, to me, I think it would create some issues that we really, I think it would create some issues that we really don't want to get involved in. And if we are going to have, again, if we are going to have other people in there, which I don't have a problem with, I would like to have the board at least know who they are and to approve that. That you approve those people or at least know of them. You don't, we don't, if even if we don't approve them, that we would know of them, but I would not like to see that. I I don't know, whatever, if 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 you would come up, uh uh if it if we would come up with some kind of. If we could look at it and that would be the beginning of a beginning of a talking point. That give us something that we could have the beginning of a talking point on. So those are my thoughts.
Ms. McIntosh? Did you have anyone?
Yeah, well, me myself, I mean, like like Ms. Ramsdale said, like I said earlier tonight, whatever the pleasure of the board is, that's what I'm willing to do because it is my intention is to first be a good board member. I don't want to uh be in charge of hiring anybody because due to the fact, Flint is small. It does create some uh. It could possibly create some for you as a board member. It seems like uh it's a double edged sword. Because we yay or nay it anyway, if they approve and wanna bring somebody before us, we, you know, we have the voting power to yay or nay as a board. So it would seem like double dipping, but like I said, I trust the administration. I just would like to see um some type of clauses or for us to use, you know, good common sense to make sure we have a fair and equal process. But I I trust administration to handle those kind of things.
I'm gonna say this. I I I agree. I I agree with the double edged sword concept. But um after the last situation, I just um it just, I just did some research and I see it's not unusual for board members to be part of the interviewing team. And I just wonder, is that something that our board will be interested in doing? Um, I'm not saying it has to be like that. I'm not saying it should be. I'm saying that should be an option if we chose to do that. So for me, I trust administration, but you know, it just kind of re, I it just wanna, I mean, all the emails I've gotten, all the calls, the text messages about the last um administration interviewed. It just it just left a bad taste in the community's mouth, so I was just trying to look for answers to try to, you know, do it as diplomatic as we could with transparency and honesty. And I think that's something that we absolutely must, you know, show the community that's what we're about. So is there anybody else have anything to say?
Is there anybody what?
Does anybody else have anything they want us to add?
No, I just want to be a part of that because that's that's not our job.
You know, and I get that.
And I respect. If you research um research that, I guess if there was other schools in Genesee County that have done it, I would just like to know who they were, but I don't, that's not a make or break decision for me. You know, I don't mind seeing the interviewing committee become a little more diverse. Like i- is it, you know, do we include the president of the union or this or that? But I if there is somebody else, Danielle, you can let me know, whatever. Does it? I would appreciate.
Okay, I'll 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 look. I may look further into it if I get moment. And I'll let you know. Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate, appreciate it.
You for.
Adjourned, which I'm sorry, Ms. McIntosh.
No, you sending me.
Yo, yo, you going out. I can't make out what you're saying, honey. You going.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think I got bad connection or something. See, no further action. I declare the Finance Committee of the Whole meeting adjourned. I now turn the floor over to Mrs. Ramsdale.
Thank you. I'd like to call the Academic Committee of the Whole to order. Uh, academics for new business, I call upon super.
Point of order, Ms. Ramsdale, you gotta go back to your cow script. We have a committee of the whole items.
Okay, wait, I got them mixed up with all the conversation. Okay, there we go. Here we are. Tell me if I'm wrong, Monica. Committee of the whole action items continued. Um, approval of payment to Genesee County Clerk, is that in the right place, dear?
No, it's point twenty one point two.
Okay. Let me find twenty one point two. Hold on, everyone. Yeah, here we are. Okay. New business. Uh, I've got graduating class twen- um, it's Ms. Stewart, is Ms. Stewart to do this or am I?
That's academic. We haven't done the Board Committee of the Whole yet.
Twenty twenty.
Okay, committee of the whole, uh uh I'd like to uh twenty five point two authorization to play. Page four.
Twenty one point two is where you should be, right?
Twenty one.
Action item twenty one, twenty one.
Twenty one point two.
There you go.
Yep.
I I have to find out where that damn action item went. Okay. We'll get there. We'll get there. I was doing pretty good up till this and you guys got me home. Conversation. Twenty one point two, approval of amendment enrolling advertising budget resolution. Ms. Stewart?
I seek your approval to move action item twenty one point two, approval of amended enrollment advertisement budget resolution to the regular board meeting on July fifteenth. I want to point out that um you guys approved this, but the amount was incorrect. So the amount before stated a thousand dollars and it should actually be eighteen hundred.
It should be what?
So this is to amend the amount.
Would you repeat the amount again? You were um it broke up.
You approved it before. The amount that you approved before was for a thousand dollars, but the amount should actually be for eighteen hundred. And so this is this um is uh to make the amendment to that.
Don't move.
Do I hear a second? Second, Ms. Green?
Danielle, can you hear you?
I'm sorry. I'm not sure what's going on here. Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, the amount we approved was wrong. Was it due to a typo or just the wrong information?
It was due to a typo.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, it was. Yes, yes. The amount before is that a thousand, but it should have said eighteen hundred.
Okay.
Yep.
Are there any other question? See none, all the favor.
No, it wasn't second.
Yes, it was. McIntosh seconded.
Oh. I did.
Yep, you did. You said, well, I was blanked out.
No, I'm saying I did. I'm saying I did. I'm.
Oh, oh, you're saying you did, yeah. You had a little question mark in your voice there, so I didn't hear it. Uh, I have. Uh, Danielle Green? Yes. Authorization to pay, yes. Danielle Green is a yes. Ms. McIntosh?
Yes.
Ms. Perry?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Vote passes four zero. Now we go to um action item twenty one point three, motion passes four zero. Twenty one point three.
I seek your approval. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Ms. Stewart.
I seek your approval to move action item twenty one point three, approval of payment to Genesee County Clerk to the regular board meeting on July fifteenth.
Don't move.
Seconding.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
And this payment is for what?
For. This payment is for the special election ballot. It's approved language for the millage bond to be added to the March tenth, twenty twenty special election ballot.
Oh, okay.
Why are we just now paying this?
Um, if I may, Ms. Um, Ms. Anita, the um the Genesee County Clerk was to um send that invoice to me. But of course, you know, we went into close down and so she didn't get the invoice to me in time. So I just wanted, as soon as I got it, I'm bringing it to you guys. But it was for the exiting to have our language added to the ballot.
How much was it?
It is for um two thousand five hundred fifty one dollars.
Okay.
Okay. And that would have been through the county, not the city clerk.
Yes.
Yes, county clerk.
County clerk, either it um, are there any other? Okay, see none. Uh, Danielle. Danielle Green?
Yes.
Ms. McIntosh?
Yes.
Ms. Perry?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Vote passes four zero. Ms. Stewart, you want to go on to the next twenty five point two?
Twenty one point four.
What changes is?
That's correct, Mrs. Stewart.
Yes, yes. Seek your approval to move action item twenty one point four, membership in the Michigan High School Athletic Association twenty twenty one to the regular board meeting on July fifteen.
Some move.
Second. Been moving properly second. Is there any discussion?
Danielle had her hand up.
Oh, no, I was scratching my head. Sorry, sorry.
How much is that membership?
Give me one second, Ms. Perry. It is, nope, no, that's not it. It is, nope, no, that's not it.
You know what, just send it to us, that's okay. Don't, 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 don't get gray hair trying to look that up.
Okay.
Ms. Stewart, there's.
There isn't a cost, I don't see one. I'm not overlooking it. Then it's not a cost.
You are correct, this is our annual.
No.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions? Seeing no further discussion, the motion is to move action twenty-one point four, membership in the Michigan High School Athletic Association, twenty, uh, two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one to the regular board meeting for adoption, will be conducted by a roll call vote. As I call your name, please say yes or no to approve the motion. Danielle Green?
Yes.
Carol McIntosh?
Yes.
Vera Perry?
Yes.
Myself, Betty Ramsdale, yes. Vote passes four zero. Going on to twenty-five point two, authorization to.
Twenty-five point one.
All right, now, you know, I'm getting a little, twenty-five point three.
You are right.
Ms. Stewart?
I seek your, I seek your approval to move action item twenty-five point one, authorization to pay athletic invoices to the regular board meeting on July fifteenth.
Don't move.
Seconding.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Just a quick question, what athletic invoices?
Okay, there's, there's an invoice from the great Put On, which is where, uh, Mr. Foster orders a lot of his, um, his polo shirts and things of that nature. Um, there's an invoice for Steve, uh, with the M A A S Athletic Trainer that's in Flushing, Michigan, and there's an invoice for McNaughton McKay, um, of Flint, Michigan.
So, um, are these old invoices or are these current?
Um, let me see. Uh, one is from March. Uh, they're all from, two is from, two are from March. And then one is from, and one is from August. So two are from March and one is from August.
So actually COVID messed us up on paying these. Am I understanding that correctly? Mrs. Stewart? Mrs. Stewart?
The one, the, can you hear me, can you hear me?
Yeah, now, uh-huh.
The two from, from March, yes.
Okay.
Ms. McIntosh?
Okay, Ms. Stewart, you said something about Steve, a, a, athletic trainer?
Yes, ma'am.
And who is, who has athletic trainer? Is he for the footballs?
Different sports have athletic trainers that work with them from time to time. So let me pull this invoice up and I can tell you who it's for.
Okay.
So this one was for athletic training services for, um, it's a combination of bas-, uh, basketball and wrestling.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any further questions? Seeing no further questions, uh, seeing no discussion, the motion to move action item twenty-five point, uh, one, to authorization to pay athletic invoices to the regular meeting will be conducted by roll call, roll call vote. As I call your name, please say yes or no. Myself, yes. Ms. McIntosh?
Yes.
Ms. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Vote passes four zero. New business.
We have one more, um, Mrs. Ramsdale, we have one more, twenty-five point two.
Authorization, right here in front of me, I just didn't read it. Uh, authorization paid for, uh, Flint Community Schools graduation class of two thousand twenty commencement DVD. Ms. Stewart?
I seek your approval to move action item twenty-five point two, authorization to pay for Flint Community Schools graduation class of twenty twenty, uh, commencement DVD. And so here, um, we were able to get, uh, to give all of our graduating seniors a copy of the DVD from, um, from the graduation.
Oh, that was nice. How much?
Uh, four hundred and eighty-five.
We need a motion. Did I get a motion or did I miss it? We need a motion.
Second.
It moved in second. Ms. Green, your question?
That was me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Perry, then you're.
How much?
Four hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Thank you.
Are there any other? Go ahead, Ms. Green.
I'm sorry, Ms. Ramsdale, can we get a copy of the video also?
Absolutely. How many people would like one?
I would like one.
Three?
You know, you might as well just do seven for the entire board, because the other people aren't here.
Uh, that would be nice. Yeah, that would be nice.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Uh, no, there's no further discussion. Uh, seeing no discussion, the motion is to move action twenty-five point two, the authorization to pay for Flint Community Schools graduation class of two thousand twenty commencement DVD to the board meeting, which will be conducted by, conducted by roll call vote. Uh, myself, yes. Ms. McIntosh?
Yes.
Ms. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Vote passes four zero. Um, new business, at, uh, twenty-five three, action item academic subcommittee now. Action item twenty-five point three, authorization to pay for National Honor Society membership. Ms. Stewart?
I seek your approval to move action item twenty-five point three, authorization to pay for National Honor Society membership to the regular board meeting.
Don't move.
Second.
It's been moved, it's been properly moved in second. Is there any discussion?
What is the price?
Two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifteen cents.
I have a question. How many stu-, do we happen to know, and if we don't, we could find out, how many students were, um, actively involved in the National Honor Society?
I'm not sure how many students were actively involved, but I can tell you that, um, this invoice is to pay for, um, seven stalls and thirteen pens.
Okay, and actively involved with that kind of thing is very flexible, so I understand where you're coming from. Uh, is there any other, are there any other questions? Uh, okay, following, uh, seeing no discussions, the motion to move action item twenty-five point three, authorization to pay for National Honor Society membership to the regular meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. Myself, yes. Uh, Ms. McIntosh?
Yes.
Ms. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero. Seeing no further que-, uh, actions, I declare the academic committee of the whole meeting adjourned. I now turn the floor back to my, myself, Ms. Wright, and the new business is, um, okay, do we have anything else, or is that it?
That's it?
That's it. Um, I would like to say one thing about the National Honor Society. Uh, I'd like to see us, um, I'd like to know who the teacher is going to be, but we really can push that. I think that's special for the kids to get involved in. Okay, uh, do any board members have any comments? At the, before we adjourn the meeting, are there any comments from the board members?
I got, um, I don't know if it's more of a comment or a question, but, um, I'm getting a lot of different information, and I just guess I wanted some clarification. Um, since the ministry, we were in need of administrators, we, I'm just wondering, who's acting as principal for the junior high, because I've heard somebody is. As far as, I just, I just don't know where we are as far as placing administrators. Are we going to do more interviewing? Are we, is that done with?
Cassandra, can you speak to Ms. Green's question?
Yes, um, so currently, Ms. Daphne Jackson has been identified, um, as the acting principal in the interim while we are continuing the interview process. So based on the concern that was, uh, raised at the previous board meeting regarding the candidate that was presented for hire, uh, the district decided that, uh, we also, we want to make sure that, uh, we are employing fair and equitable, uh, hiring processes and practices and, um, showing and demonstrating to our community that we are, um, objective in the hiring process. So a decision was made to extend the posting for the principal of the middle school. The posting closed today, and we are currently, um, screening candidates that will be contacted for interview this Friday. And then from this Friday during the interview process, um, there will be a decision made of a candidate to move forward to the second round for consideration for hire.
Well, how long has she been acting principal at the? Is that something?
I'm sorry, is this, uh, July first, uh, because the principal, the previous principal contract, uh, ended June thirtieth?
Okay, is that something that the board was informed about, or did I miss that?
She was the assistant principal over there already, I think.
Yes, she is the assistant principal. So I apologize, should that have come before the board? Um, there hasn't been a, a change in any pay or anything like that, and it's on an interim basis. But if it's, um, should have come before the board, I apologize for that, and we'll make sure that it's on the next one.
I just want to make sure I didn't miss none, because I'm capable of that for sure. Um, and far as Eisenhower, who, is there acting principal?
Not at this time for Eisenhower, because we were, um, trying to coordinate all of these different, uh, processes of identifying administrator along with, um, the consolidation and based on who would be selected for, uh, principal at junior high, we were looking at our other internal administrators for assignment to, possible assignment to Eisenhower.
And the elementary principals have not returned to work yet. Only our secondary principals are, are back to work right now. Our elementary principals do not return back to work until Monday, the twentieth, is that correct, Cassandra?
Right, July twentieth, yes.
Yeah, July twentieth, and so we would not need to put anyone in place as acting, uh, in that position unless, um, the elementary principals are back to work and we don't have anyone over there.
Okay.
We haven't assigned a principal to that building.
Okay, I appreciate it. So when I'm out in the community and they people ask me these questions, I'm going to be able to answer them with a little, you know, information and knowledge. So I appreciate it, Mrs. Washington, and thank you, Ms. Stewart.
You're welcome.
Any further comments? Ms. Perry, Ms. McIntosh? Seeing no further actions, I declare the board committee of the whole meeting adjourned. Have a good night, everyone. And I have to say, I told myself staple those sheets together so you don't screw them up, and of course I didn't, and of course I did. So now you know staple.
You did good. Yeah, you did very well.
Thank you. I love you all. Take care and be careful, be safe, everyone, please.
Love you.
Thank you, administrators, I appreciate your time.
You froze, Ms. Perry. Oh, no, you ain't.